One's here. This is our second Mayor's Award for this year. We do this twice a year. We recognize students, volunteers, and teachers twice a year. And we don't select them. We let the staff and the principals do that. So if you're here, then you're probably happy with their selection. But I do want to thank our staff. Kristy Ollman and who else helped Kristy get putting this together? Just you? Sam Jennifer. So thank y'all. We got a couple of folks here from the school board. Dale Gaddis is always here. I'm not going to say anything about his suit. Tim Stoltz is here. He's our representative. If you ever outdress Dale Gaddis, you're in a coffin. Now, he is without a doubt the sharpest dresser in the world. And I say that. I wish I could dress half as good and had that much hair. That is a wig, by the way. Again, thank y'all so much for being here. I'm sure there's be some other council members that will come down. We actually had a meeting upstairs. But Ron Fennel is here to help me give out these awards because we're always on a sort of a short fuse. Tim, or did he want to say something? Thank you.
Good night.
You can say something if we've got enough time left. Okay? But listen, we do have a great relationship with the school board and Dale Gaddis. And Tim has been great to us. We're very fortunate. And I'll say it again, as I say every one of these meetings, that what drives our community are the schools. And we have a great relationship with the schools. When people move to this area, they don't ask, they don't care who the mayor is, they don't care who the council member is, they don't care who the fire chief is or the police chief. They want to know about schools. And that's the most important thing that we can do is to focus on education. Argyle Elementary is the first school. Give him a big hand. While they're on the way up here, I do want to just make this quick announcement. Tonight at a regular council meeting, we're going to recognize Norton Park. Doug Daultrey out, he's here somewhere. 50th year that they have been in business over there. I know that, for nothing, how old I was. Eh, okay. Robert, Bob, good to see you.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Bacon and council for taking time to acknowledge the accomplishments of these special individuals. First, 5th grade student Jennifer Trejo. Jennifer is an extremely hard-working and conscientious student who always strives to do her best. She's an active member of the school's morning show as well as the chorus. One of Jennifer's teachers described her as "a wonderful young lady who inspires us all with her willingness to care." She's a fabulous role model who possesses integrity, intelligence, kindness, and unending patience. With these characteristics, there are no limits to the heights Jennifer may achieve. Congratulations. Next, Argyle's Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Kathy Beckman. Kathy's been working at Argyle for the past 13 years as the school's bookkeeper. Kathy Beckman is not only the gatekeeper of supplies, funds, and textbooks at Argyle, she provides a comforting shoulder and an ear to all who have a need or request. Her compassion at school is multiplied by the devotion she gives to her favorite causes. The sea turtle rescue of Jekyll Island, Cobb County Relay for Life, and the fight against breast cancer are closest to her heart. Argyle Elementary in Smyrna are fortunate to have such a committed and concerned advocate. Finally, I would like to recognize our volunteer recipient, Mrs. Jennifer Overly. Jen is the children's director at Cumberland Community Church and a tutor at Argyle. Two years ago, Ms. Overly visited our school and asked how she could become a volunteer. She started by tutoring in two of our kindergarten classes each week. This year, Ms. Overly organized an effort that afforded each one of our kindergarten teachers a tutor from the church. This energetic group of seven tutors come to Argyle every Tuesday and work with our kindergarten students to help them develop their reading skills. To date, this group has logged in approximately 1,000 hours in Argyle kindergarten classrooms. Because of Jen's encouragement and support, many of Argyle's kindergarten students will move to first grade reading on grade level. Ms. Overly, we thank you for all that you do in supporting the students and teachers at Argyle.
I also want to thank, thank y'all very much. Congratulations. As Belmont Hills is coming up, I did want to thank Jim and Nick's. They gave dinner for six at Jim and Nick's for each recipient. Or it could have been a barbecue sandwich. What do you think it is? It's a barbecue sandwich. Belmont Hills, Bertha, is it Bertha Nelson? I want to say Terry Flores. She's been here since... Hi, how you doing?
Mayor and board members, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening to present these awards to these wonderful employees and volunteers of Belmont Hills. Our student mayor award is a 5th grade student at Belmont Hills. He's been at Belmont since he was a kindergarten student. And when I asked the teachers to nominate someone for this award, his name was nominated by everyone on the leadership team. In describing him to me, the teachers mentioned traits such as he's a role model, he's a hard worker, he's creative, he's responsible. And one of them even said, "He's everything you can ask for in a student, Ms. Nelson." As he moves on to middle school, I know he's going to do a great job and he's going to represent Belmont Hills well. So it's my pleasure to present this award to Angel Yurstegi. Our teacher mayor's award goes to a teacher who has been at Belmont Hills for over 13 years. She started her career as a paraprofessional and loved the kids so much that she decided to go into teaching. She has been a tremendous support for the vision of the school, and as a new principal, I greatly appreciate that. Anything that needs to get done, she's there, front and center, to get ready and get it done. And not only that, she does all, everything she does with a smile. Whether it be painting, building, organizing, mentoring students or other teachers, she's there to do what needs to get done. In a few weeks, she's going to be leaving us. She's decided to retire, and I don't know why. Just the thought of her not being around makes us all so sad that we've already signed her up for volunteer work, reading with the students, working in the PTA. So she only thought she was retiring. We're truly going to miss her, and it's my honor to present this mayor's award to Ms. Jan Chastain. Ms. Chastain, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And finally, our mayor's award for the volunteer at Belmont Hills is Ms. Maria Collin. And Ms. Maria Collin has been at Belmont Hills in the capacity of a parent for the past eight years. She has four children, which all have attended Belmont Hills, and she's expecting her next one soon. And that unfortunately is going to be a new Smyrna elementary student. He has been redistricted. She's one of our parent leaders. Oh, I know. Trust me, I know. In trying to grow our PTA this year, she's been instrumental in recruiting and training parents in all the activities that we've done and that we've had at the school. She's always at the school for meetings and activities, all of our PTA events. She even volunteers with our Girl Scout Clubs that we have after school. I'm very proud of her. She's been working, in addition to all the things that she's done, she's working on her GED. And she, I'm proud to say that she's almost finished. She just needs to finish her last few tests and she'll have that certificate in hand. So with that, I'm very thankful to have her as a parent and someone that we can count on for support at the school. It's my pleasure to present this mayor's award to Ms. Maria Collin.
James Ward, Brown Elementary. This will be the last time we'll be doing this, isn't it, James? James Ward? Hey, I know some of these people.
Once again, we would like to join our other schools in thanking Mayor Bacon for this wonderful opportunity. This beautiful young lady standing next to me is Ms. Marisol Dominguez. She's a 4th grade student at Brown. And as beautiful as she looks tonight, she's just as beautiful every day at school. And her teacher, Ms. Cooley, has written some special words that I want to share tonight about you. Marisol is a quiet strength in our classroom. She always wants to help others, and she constantly puts forth her best effort. Marisol is diligent and conscientious. She always works to learn more and to improve herself. Marisol is active in the Brown Elementary chorus and the Good News Club. And the teacher says, Ms. Cooley says, "I can always count on Marisol to set the example for others and to always do the right thing." So round of applause for this lovely lady. This wonderful family over here on the end, this is Mr. Sean Murphy and his wife Michelle and their daughter Kira and their son Ryan. The Murphys are just an incredible part of Brown Elementary and the Smyrna community. They volunteer on a regular basis. And this year, Sean has been especially helpful in the transition from Brown to Smyrna Elementary. He's been solely responsible for coordinating all the efforts for the landscaping of Smyrna Elementary, and at the same time, has continued to be very supportive at Brown. Michelle, we see on a daily basis. She's obviously a full-time mom, a full-time student, but always finds time to be at Brown to make a difference in the lives of not only her daughter, but all the kids at Brown. So we appreciate Sean and Michelle and their family. And this lovely lady standing next to me now, Ms. Andrea Sullivan-Smith, has been the guidance counselor at Brown for 22 years. I know she looks too young for that, but she has been there for 22 years, making a difference in the lives of the teachers and the parents and the students. And she has touched so many individuals. And she, along with Jan, has decided this year to retire and to start the next chapter of her life. But we love Andrea, and she's been a tremendous support to me. When I came to Brown, she was very much responsible for the success of being a new principal. And there are several other principals in the room that have had the pleasure of serving with her. So we appreciate her and her love and guidance in the community. So congratulations to Andrea.
What's the message here? Everybody's leaving? Angela White, Green Acres. While they're coming up, I'm going to mention this twice. Once you get home tonight, you can go to a feed off of our website, and you can watch this live. I mean, it won't be live. Hey, no laughing. I've never picked on you. You can watch it, you can go on, it's a live feed. So we actually can do it. How you doing?
Hello, Mr. Mayor? Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Bacon. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. And the first person I have to introduce is a 2nd grade student at Green Acres. This is Emmanuel Rodriguez. Emmanuel works very hard, and he's worked very hard all year to improve his reading ability. Turn around so you can take big pictures. He continues to make gains in reading, but he absolutely loves math, right? You have to have, Emmanuel will tell you about mathematics. You like going to the math lab, right? In addition to that, he's always willing to help clean up. After PTA, you'll find him with a broom, sweeping up to help the school get back in order for the next day. So because of your excellent academic commitment and your good citizenship, the mayor has an award for you. Next is Ms. Carrie Saunders. She not only is our math lab teacher and a fantastic teacher, but she has served this year as our Gimme Five campaign coordinator, the United Way campaign coordinator, the Box Top for Educators coordinator, our Relay for Life Gimme Pennies coordinator. She is what I call the fundraising goddess at Green Acres. So on behalf of not only the academic excellence that you support, but your commitment to the Green Acres family, the mayor has an award for you. And last, but certainly not least, is my wonderful volunteer, Maria Martinez. Any day that you stop by Green Acres, you will see Maria. She is either working in the office, helping in a classroom, popping popcorn to sell at PTA, selling the popcorn at PTA, cleaning up after PTA. Maria's always willing to do whatever we need, whenever we need a helping hand. So for your spirit and willingness to do whatever we need, thank you for all your hard work, and the mayor has an award for you.
Thank you very much. Linda Kinney, King Springs Elementary. We're a little bit behind, so...
What does that mean?
I mean, you don't, she's going to do this right here. Hey, how you doing? I'm Miss Kinney's brother.
It gives me a great deal of honor tonight to recognize our staff person and our volunteer person and our student. And the first award that we'll do is this beautiful young lady who came into my life when she started the 1st grade. Look at that smile. She wins you over every time. This is Kennedy Brown, and Kennedy's academic and character achievements set her far apart from the crowd. She's honest, respectful, compassionate, humorous, hardworking, and persistent. She carries herself always like a young lady, as you can see by looking at her. She'll lend a helping hand to folks. Kennedy's friends know that they can depend on her. She has been very active at King Springs. She has been part of our King Springs Melody Makers, and she has been part of our KSTV crew. And her parents won't like this, but you better put her in a box in two or three years because she's the kind of girl that any boy would like to bring home to mama. So Kennedy Brown, we're very proud of. And our next person is Catherine Hoskins, who is our pupil personnel clerk. And I finally say that she's the first person you see when you walk in the door and register, and she's the last person you see when you walk out the door and withdraw. She knows our students better than anybody at the school. I can say all the time, now, "Who is that?" And she'll say, "Well, you know, that's so-and-so, and they're in such-and-such's room, and their mother and daddy is this person and that person, and they work at so-and-so, and yes, I know the phone number, and what else do you need?" She's always able to tell us that. She's the one that organizes all of our birthday parties. She organizes when we have showers to give. When anybody needs anything, and particularly me, I go to Catherine because she's the most important worker that we've got in the office. So I appreciate every... She stays later than me, many times. And I go, "Go home, Catherine." "I am, I just got one more thing to do. I'll be out in a little bit." So she is a great help to our office, and it is a great honor to honor her tonight. And this couple, and they've got their children with them. Oh, one, Joey wouldn't come up? No, he would not. Okay. They've got two precious children, Joey and Grace. Grace was the winner of one of our writing awards, so they have very bright children. This is Larry and Kenda Bloomberg, and they volunteer at my school. Not an hour a week, not two hours a week, but they donate one full day a week to volunteering at our school. They do, they do most anything that we ask them to do. They both help with our Rocket Reader Program, which is very helpful. Kenda runs copies for anybody that needs them, helps people to cut out stuff. The kids call Larry, aka Coach Bloomberg, and you'll see him working with small groups of students in the media center, helping them to read and do better with their academics. And it's just been an honor to have this wonderful family. Mayor, I think they may be across the street neighbors. You don't hold that against him, do you? Okay. Oh, no, Wyoming. Did you know that? Okay. He cleaned it up. They are a great family to have in our school, and we thoroughly enjoy having them. So congratulations to both of you.
Beverly, you never change.
I know so.
I know so. You look great. You look marvelous.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. Would all the NicaJack recipients come up? Is Marcos here, Ramirez? Oh, here he comes. Looking very handsome, Marcos. Come on up. Hey, come on up. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing us this opportunity to showcase our schools. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you our student recipient for the mayor's award, and that is Marcos Ramirez. Marcos has been with NicaJack since 1st grade, and I have seen him grow over the years. He has really perfected his English language, and he is a model student. He is part of our Dream Team, which is a group of boys that do a lot of service projects at our school. And whenever he puts on his Dream Team uniform, he does it with pride, and he shows great character. And one of his teachers said that he has made significant progress in all academic areas, and that she was very, very proud of him. And I'm proud of him as well, so it is my pleasure to introduce him to you this evening. Good job. Mrs. is mom. All right. Our staff, excuse me, our staff member who is going to receive the mayor's award this evening is Ms. Jessica Powers. And Jessica, I had the opportunity to know her first as a parent. I met her when I first came to NicaJack seven years ago, and she was very active, actively involved in all things at NicaJack. One of the things that she did while I was the principal at NicaJack, while I am still the principal of NicaJack, sometimes I wonder, but she was my PTA co-president. She's very active in anything that we do at the school. But this, in the middle of the year, I had an opportunity to hire her as a clerk. And she is in charge of student information and student registration, and she can handle Excel, an Excel worksheet, like nobody's business. So whenever I have a question about Excel, I can always go to her. She works with another clerk, and together, they are the dynamic duo. So I am really proud to have her on staff. And I have two volunteers who are going to receive the award this evening. And the reason I have these two ladies is because they do just about everything together as it relates to volunteering at NicaJack. I have with me Beth Figaretti, and I have Allison Bosewite. And the two of them have done a tremendous job at NicaJack, so much so that I really ought to have them on my payroll because they are there all the time. They have been very instrumental in organizing our NicaJack Dash and our silent auction. And it's a wonderful event for our families at NicaJack, but it also is an outreach to our community, and we get lots of people that participate in that event. They're also very active with our Kindness Club. They are very active with Accelerated Reader, and they don't just go to classes where their children reside. They work with all children in our school. So I am very proud to introduce them to you this evening.
Leslie.
Norton Park.
Norton Park, 50-year-old, Doug Daultrey. While he's coming out, I'm going to tell you, I don't think anybody in this room knows how important you are to the school system and to the kids. Your involvement in the school is priceless. What you give back is just unbelievable. Doug?
Thank you, good to see you. Thank you, Mayor Bacon. Thank you, council members, for this wonderful opportunity. Let's be clear, I am not 50 years old. Norton Park is 50 years old. Please join me in welcoming up here some fantastic people who have made a real difference in our school and our community. I'm going to start over here. This is Denise Sickenetter, and she is with a wonderful organization that many of you may have heard of, the Atlanta Hawks. We were, had the great blessing of being able to partner up with the Hawks this year. And you want to talk about somebody who has been able to come into our school, energize our community, energize our students, provided incentives for our standardized testing, for our fall festival. She's just been there at every event that we have, and she's wrapped her arms around our community, made learning a lot of fun for our children, and exposed them to some opportunities and some things out there in the world, like basketball games and healthy lifestyles, and things that a lot of our students may not have the opportunity to be a part of, but they now do because of Denise and the Atlanta Hawks. So very proudly deserved that mayor's award. This lady to my right, this is our staff member at Norton Park. This is Laura Fane. She is our school social worker. And you talk about somebody with a servant mentality, a servant heart. I think Laura runs with the essential question in her head, "How can I help? How can I make things better?" She's been with families in some, probably some of their darkest times, and she stays to the end to make sure that she can do something to improve their life or help them with any type of need that they have. She does it for anybody who needs it, and she's been doing it for our school for several years now, and we couldn't be prouder to have her at Norton Park. All right. Marlon, make sure everybody sees this awesome smile. Anybody see that? I tell you, that never, ever goes away. Never. And there's something even more amazing about that when I tell you what this young man has had to face and what he's had to go through, what he's currently going through. Marlon is a terrific 4th grade student who found out several years ago that his kidneys were failing him, and they knew that something was going to have to be done about that. And that time came very recently. He very recently had both of his kidneys removed, and he's on the kidney donor list. And when I say that smile has never, ever left his face, I was not lying. He wakes up every morning, he faces every challenge that's in front of him. His family's over here, and when you get a chance to get to know them, you'll see why he is the way that he is. He's an amazing young man and a great example for all of us for what it means to have a terrific outlook towards life, to have perseverance, and to just keep on keeping on. So very, very deserving of this terrific award.
Lesley Mansford, where's she at? Lesley? Lesley? We're still running behind. That's what you tell them.
Thank you so much, Mayor and the council as well, for allowing us to be here to honor some fabulous people in our schools. I'm going to start with this young lady right here. This is Callie Anderson. Callie is a 5th grader at Teasley. And truly, Callie is involved in just about everything she can possibly be involved in. She's a wonderful role model. She was part of Girls on the Run this year, really setting an example for the younger students and being a mentor to them. She's part of our Treble Tones, the chorus, and has a nice role in our musical that's coming up, which is Jungle Book. Callie is part of Student Council. She's our historian. She's our historian, and just, she's part of our recycling program at school, and just always, always, always does a great job. Her teacher gave me some comments to say about her, and just that she is always kind, always looking out for others, always putting others first, and truly just a model student and a wonderful girl. So Callie has been with us since first grade, and we are sad to see her go on to middle school this year. I'm gonna let you swap with Ms. T. Next, we have Teresa Wilcox, better known as Ms. T. Ms. T. is our Classified Employee of the Year. She was just recognized by her peers and then all of our staff to be honored with that. T. is one of our custodians, and truly, everybody, every hallway comes to me every year, don't you think we could have Ms. T. back? Couldn't we have Ms. T. back? Everybody wants Ms. T., but you know, I'm a smart girl, and I have her cleaning the front up where I am and making sure that, there's a great first impression when everybody comes on Teasley's campus. So T. is always willing to jump in and help out wherever, and just is a wonderful person and just a great friend as well. So thank you for being wonderful, T. And then, last but not least, this is Angela Blackwell, and Angela is the president of our PTA this year at Teasley. And I have to say, Angela is just like a well-oiled machine. She took everything to a new level at Teasley this year, just so organized, so on top of things, keeping me organized, keeping all of our volunteers organized, working hand-in-hand not only with all of our PTA people but our foundation to make sure that things run seamlessly, and just taking care of everyone. She's the mom of three girls, two of whom are at Teasley now, in kindergarten and third grade, and I'm thankful that little Sarah will be coming along in a few years so we get to keep the Blackwell family around for a long time. So thank you so much for all you do for everyone at Teasley.
For every family, there's always a leader, and that's got to be Ms. Blackwell. Justice Blackwell is in the back. I know your neighbor's with Brian Hubble, and the Hubbles are good people. Thank you for coming. Campbell Middle School, Gail Johnson. We're still running a little behind. This is a great night, isn't it? You didn't have to pay for any of that, the desserts out front, it'll be on your next water bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bacon. Thank you, Council. It's my pleasure and honor to recognize some folks at Campbell Middle School who make our school what it is. And the first person I want to introduce is our eighth-grade student, Nyla Swain. Nyla's been at Campbell for three years, and during the three years she's been there, I looked at her transcript today. In middle school, you take, you get grades every four weeks, I mean, I'm sorry, every nine weeks, so you have four quarters. And over those three years there, she's gotten all As and Bs except for twice during three years in middle school, and she is an advanced student in all of her classes. Nyla epitomizes what we call the International Baccalaureate Student at Campbell Middle School. She is a role model to her peers. She is open-minded, she's an enquirer, and she's a communicator. And most importantly, perhaps for middle grades, she's principled. She stands for what is right, even in the face of decisions that are wrong. She's always representing what is best about our adolescents today. Nyla's in our WCMS Morning News program. She's a Renaissance student, and she sings in our chorus. She is a school spirit. She is one that is not afraid to be proud of being a great student at school, and she is one that is proud of her school. Now, unfortunately, Nyla, well fortunately, unfortunately, she's gone to Pebblebrook. She has been accepted into their Performing Arts Magnet Program, but yes, we're very proud of her. However, I've been threatening to retain her just so I can have her around for another year, but we are very proud of you, and congratulations, Nyla. Next, I'd like to honor Mrs. Rhonda Loki. Mrs. Loki has been at Campbell Middle School for three years now, and she is, by all accounts, creative every single day in her classroom. She is full of energy. She is focused on making sure that our students receive relevant and rigorous instruction every single day, and she is supportive, not just of her students, but of staff and of the greater community. Rhonda is a student-teacher supervisor, so we are fortunate that she gets to spread her talent and craft to the next generation of teachers, and she's been doing that for the last couple of years. Ms. Loki, on top of teaching every single day, is also part of our Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl sponsor, state runner-ups, I might say. She is a sponsor for our Lady Spartans Club, and not only has she been recognized by the students as being an amazing teacher, but she just found out last Friday that she is our 2013-14 Teacher of the Year. So thank you, Ms. Loki. Now, I know it says Joan Stewart in your brochure, and Joan Stewart is actually the recipient of our award, but she is, had to leave early for a Boy Scouts meeting. Now, I would like to make a joke about how the women do all the work and the men only have to receive the award, but Mayor, I'm afraid you're not gonna let me get away with that one. However, on her behalf is Chauncey Stewart, and her son over there is Chandler Stewart. And, thanks Chandler. Ms. Stewart has been an amazing volunteer at Campbell Middle School this year. She's served on our membership drive for our PTSA, and then, like most principals, when you see what a great job a volunteer does, you just go ahead and give them some more things to do. So she has graciously also taken over the presidency of our school council. Ms. Stewart has helped our school in so many different ways. Her son is also part of our, the state runner-up, Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl, and she has shown up to all of the competitions. She's helped feed the students, she's helped make sure students get to all of the different areas of the state that we've had to travel to, and she is always willing to do whatever is necessary to help our school. So Mr. Stewart, I thank you for being here in her behalf and accepting that, and thank you for having such a wonderful wife.
That just broke the record for talking. You broke Linda Keeney's record, Principal Keeney. I didn't think anybody could ever do it, but it's, yeah. If you're sitting out there, it seemed like it, I'm just joking. It's great to recognize folks, and we'll be here as long as y'all want to until 7:30. Dr. Treckenvoyk.
Griffin Middle School. Give me a big hand.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, Mr. Gaddish, Mr. Salz, thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rolando Nunez. He's an eighth grader at Griffin Middle School. And when it was time this year to nominate a student for the Mayor's Award, I went to our eighth-grade teachers, and I asked them, can you guys please, you know, get together and nominate a student that you think is deserving of the award? And I gave them about a week. I said, can you just get back to me within a week so we can start the plan? Within five minutes, I got an email response back, and they had picked Rolando. I mean, it was that quick. It was unanimous decision. So this is Mr. Rolando Nunez. His teachers had just written a short little description for me, so I'm just gonna read it briefly for you. It says, Rolando's a stellar student with a great personality, work ethic, and manners. He's bright and creative, eager to participate in class, and always goes above and beyond. He's a student of all subjects. Teachers know when an assignment has been completed by Rolando because his handwriting is clear, beautiful, and unique. He has a way with vocabulary that is portrayed in thoughtful poetry. He's a Renaissance man. Even though he excels in all areas, Rolando's favorite subject is science, he really enjoys participating in the labs. He's a diligent, inquisitive young man. He's a joy to have in class, always respectful and helpful to others, and is a model student. One of his teachers has quoted us stating, "I wish I had a classroom full of Rolandos." So, and Ms. Espinoza, Mr. Nunez, you guys here? I want to thank you guys for raising such an outstanding young man. Thank you, guys. Our next award will go to Ms. Tracy Efall. She's a staff member, she's our academic coach at Griffin, and if everybody remembers, close to mind, she Energizer Bunny. Well, I've got a lot of energy, but I have a hard time keeping up with Tracy. Every time I think she's got too much on her plate, and there's more, you know, that has to be done, she says, just give me some more, just give me some more. So I've learned to give her some more. At Griffin this year, we've made a major push towards literacy, a literacy initiative. We call it the Draw Initiative. Tracy's been instrumental with that. We use her talents to bring literacy to all our teachers. She's actually, she'll be presenting about our literacy initiative to the county this year in the summertime. She's also gone throughout the state and talked a little bit about our literacy initiatives. We're very, very proud of that. She was a Staple Award winner earlier this year. I believe it was about $1,000 worth of school supplies that was donated to the school for Ms. Efall, so that was great. She works with our new teachers, helping our new teachers just learn the culture of Griffin. She's an invaluable asset. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Tracy Efall. And now we have Ms. Dawn McLaughlin. As the principals have been up here, and they've talked about the volunteers in the school, Dawn, she does everything. I mean, she's, she helps us with copies, she helps us in the library, she, she, some of you know, and those of you who work in schools know, sometimes there are parents that, when they come into the building, you know when they enter the building. Dawn is very, very low-key. Sometimes they don't even know she's there, but we know because things are getting done. She helps us a lot. We just had one of our big fundraisers, which are the Penny Wars. Are you familiar with Penny Wars and how that works? Each class is actually given, it's like a jug, and what the students in class do is they come with pennies, and the more pennies they put into the jug, the more points they earn. But the trick is, if you come with silver coins or dollar bills, you take away points. So we had a two-week penny war, and it was a battle. And Mr. McLaughlin was, she was very, very instrumental in that. We gave our winners ice cream parties. So we had our ice cream party last week, and Dawn was on the phone, we ran out of sprinkles. And she was on the phone, and I'm assuming it was her husband, because I heard, just look in the pantry, it's to the right-hand side, get the sprinkles and bring the sprinkles up to the school. So Mr. McLaughlin, I hope that was you. I hope I just didn't let that one out. So, but anyway, I'd just like to introduce Ms. Dawn McLaughlin.
Sprinkles. Things have changed since I've been at school. Campbell High School, Dr. Denise McGee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Denise McGee, the proud principal of Campbell High School, and it's an honor to recognize three individuals who make a difference at Campbell, and I would like to thank the Mayor and the Council for giving us this opportunity. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I would like to begin with our teacher, Mrs. Deborah Ahie, who is creative, motivating, inspiring. She's an English teacher. She sponsors our award-winning newspaper, all done by our students under her leadership. She thinks out the box, but more importantly, other than being an outstanding teacher, she cares about our students. And that's the biggest difference any one teacher can do, care about his or her students. So it's an honor to recognize Mrs. Deborah Ahie for all that she does at Campbell High This next individual is very special to me. I had the honor of serving as his middle school principal for three years, and then most recently as his high school principal for the last two years. So I've seen him grow and mature into a very fine young man. He's an outstanding senior, one of our wrestlers who has done a fabulous job, went to state, so lots of talent here. Charles is committed, polite, dedicated, and does all that he can to beat the odds and the challenges he has faced over the years. So it's indeed an honor for me to recognize Charles Robertson. This next individual, Mr. Glenn Jardine, is one of our volunteers. Volunteers are very important people, and today I heard our superintendent use an acronym, Volunteers Inspire, Volunteers Produce Results. And without a doubt, Mr. Glenn Jardine does that. He's a member of our foundation, heads up our golf tournament every year, which is a huge success and a great money win. Oh, that is true. The mayor donates half of the money to us, so that makes it even more successful. Okay, no, it won't be on our next water bill. Mr. Glenn Jardine is also a committed parent who volunteers as a baseball parent. He, both he and his wife are usually at every baseball game volunteering. They do whatever we need. He is there, he does whatever we need him to do, and is always committed and truly a champion for Campbell High School. So it is an honor to recognize Mr. Glenn Jardine.
Thank y'all. That's the way you need to do it, three minutes and 12 seconds. International Academy, Dr. Gwen Miller. There's only five more. No, I'm kidding. I think there's one more, then we got, how you doing?
Good evening. I'm actually Talana Hicks. And Dr. Miller, we have two principals at International Academy of Smyrna, myself and Dr. Miller. And tonight, we also had a little thing at McDonald's, so she went there and I came here. So that being said, I want to start with fifth-grade student, Ms. Peyton Cherry. Peyton is a member of the Junior Beta Club, and she's a straight-A student, but she exemplifies also the IB learner profile words of risk taker. This summer, she's gonna be traveling without her parents to Australia. And so I think that for a young lady at her age, that's really a leap of faith, and I'm sure she's gonna do well. She's principled. The teachers talk about how forthright, honest, and humble she is, and she's very knowledgeable because she is a straight-A student. And so I want to take this time to honor Peyton Cherry and to tell her congratulations Next up is Ms. Lakeisha Walker. Ms. Walker has been with International Academy of Smyrna since the school opened six years ago. Last year, she got a promotion, and she became the IB PYP Coordinator and Instructional Coach, and she and I worked well together. Well, I was also the IB NYPD Coordinator, so we were kind of like stuck to the hip. And so now, this year, since I've become the principal, her role still as the coordinator, but we've given her some more duties, like dividing classes when teachers are out, or helping with professional development, or working in the cafeteria. So she's just really a well-balanced, global-minded person, very humble, knowledgeable, and congratulations, Okay, last but not least, this is Ms. Judy. I cannot pronounce her last name. It's Ms. Judy. Every day, every day. It's been almost 180 days now. She's always at the school helping. She does the tardy sweep in the mornings, she helps with pizza on Fridays, she does copying for the teachers. I could, I can't really say enough about her. And when she's not there, particularly in the mornings before the final bell rings, I'm looking around, and I'm like, well, where's Ms. Judy? Because I can't stand out here like this waiting on these kids. And so, but she's a wonderful person, she's a hard worker, she'll do anything that we ask of her. She helps at the front desk. I can't say enough. So I want to say thank you, Ms. Judy. We appreciate you so much at International Academy.
Whitfield Academy, the one we've been waiting on, the last one. Don't look so happy, Tom. I forgot to mention what, Food Truck Tuesday at Bronner's tomorrow night, for those folks that like to go to the food truck event.
I am not Dr. Braichur. Dr. Braichur is enjoying the evening with a school board meeting, so I can, know you'll appreciate when I say he much rather wishes he could be here. But my name's Tom Wood, and I am with Whitfield Academy on the administration team. And Whitfield Academy is a Christ-centered college preparatory school in Smyrna, Georgia, that exists to bolster Christian families and rearing young people who go on to college in life with a passion for learning, a passion for others ahead of self, and a passion for the living and act of Jesus. And the three recipients today represent those three passions, and I want to thank the Mayor and the Council for providing this opportunity to acknowledge these folks. First up is our student, which is Ally McLamore. Ally's a lifetime Smyrna resident, eight Ally's a lifetime Smyrna resident, eight, oh, 18 years. She's been involved with a lot of things here in Smyrna area, and at Whitfield, she started in 5th grade, and she was on the varsity track team, cross-country, basketball. She's also a member of the Thespian Society, and did many plays, how many plays did you do? Six plays. She's also a member of the Fellowship Christian Athlete Leadership Team, she's on the chapel committee, and she's also in Girl Talk. She's one of our counselors, where our upper school girls counsel and mentor the underclass girls. So, and she's also studying for an AP test right now, which is tomorrow for AP, Computer Science. So, she's gonna be going to Samford University in the fall, studying nutrition. So, Ally McLamore. Rebecca Brown is an art teacher at Whitfield, and started in 2006, and we just had our Arts Week. And if you were to come through the campus in our beautiful new building, Morris Hall, you would see the artwork just displayed, and it's amazing, the level that our students do. She brings the best out of them. We just had Steve Penley come in as a guest speaker in the class, and it just encourages, she continually brings in great speakers, motivating the kids to do better and better. She's also the dean of, Associate Dean of Students, she's also the sponsor for Girl Talk, and more than that, she's just a mentor to our girls. She's married to Todd, who's a fourth-generation Smyrna resident. And outside of Whitfield, she's also a Girl Scout leader for the Smyrna Troop here, the John Quill Smyrna Troop, and she's also a member of First United Methodist Church of Smyrna. And now Becky. Becky Matherne is my hero. She is our volunteer. I do fundraising at Whitfield, and she has been my excellent partner in life. We just completed a $13 million campaign that started at 10, went to 11 and 1/2, grew to 12, and then ended up being 13. And I would get very discouraged, and Becky was there to encourage me along the way. She retired in 2008 and thought she'd have nothing to do. Since that time, she's, this year, I think she's been the middle school football mom, she's been the co-chair of the carnival, she served as our auction chair with her husband, Rich, who's back there, who's at the school just as much as she is. We just raised $400,000 at this auction, money that's gonna be used to purchase more land. So, quite honestly, in the last year, we've added five acres, not only to Whitfield, but to the city of Smyrna, since it's got a mix into, into the city. So, Becky's responsible for that, so Becky Matherne.
Sounds like a lot of money, but $400,000 gets you maybe a 100-by-100-foot lot in Smyrna, so. But it'll be in the city, so thank y'all very much. Dale Gaddis and Tim Stolz, if y'all wanna come forward, we got one more award. This is perfect timing, 'cause I will cut you boys off in a second. We start at 7:30, so I know, you wanna say something, then Dale's gonna make it.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon. Everyone, give a round of applause for Mayor Bacon and the City Council. Schools here in Smyrna, they are stronger because of the commitment that the city has for our education. I want to congratulate all the award winners tonight, and congratulate everybody on a successful year, and hope everybody has a great summer coming up, and look forward to the next coming school year. Everyone, have a great evening.
Good evening. I have an honor this evening to recognize one of our former principals. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to do this. Ms. Terry Floyd, Terry, if you would please come forward, is now the former principal of Belmont Hills Elementary. Terry was there for, I believe, eight years, and she never let me forget it, the entire time I'm on the court. Terry, the reason we wanted to give Terry this award, ladies and gentlemen, is because in leadership and with teachers, we all want to be role models, and we ask our teachers to be role models for their children. And I ask my principals to become role models for their children and everyone else in the community, and we have some very high expectations. And Terry, during her tenure, created some very high expectations for her kids and for her staff. She is a leader, she's fearless, much to my chagrin, but she is fearless, and we're going to miss her. In a short leave of her senses, she accepted a position at the central office. I still have not forgiven her for that, but that's okay. But she has been dedicated to her kids, to Belmont Hills, and to the city of Smyrna. So, this evening, Terry, we'd like to give you the Mayor's Award, if you don't.
Terry, say something.
I just want to say very quickly, thank you, Mr. Gaddis, and thank you, Mayor Bacon, for this award. And I've stood at this podium many times for over eight years, and honored students, teachers, staff members, and volunteers. And I just have to tell you that I'll never have another experience, I hope I can say this without crying, as I've had at Belmont Hills Elementary School. Such an honor to be the principal, and such an honor to work with such a dedicated staff and a professional staff. I'll never have anything greater in my professional career, never work with a greater group of principals. Smyrna has the best principals in the whole district, that's the truth, and such an honor for me to have this role for eight years. And I thank you for your support, and thank you for tonight, for this honor.
And with that, it's great timing, 7:28. If you want to stick around and watch the meeting, you don't have much of a life, so thank y'all so much, and we're adjourned. Thank you very much.